Good afternoon, or good evening.
Good evening.
We will start off with the pledge, I'm sorry, with a prayer and a pledge. And I want to do the prayer. Those who want to partake, please do so. Most gracious of me, Father, we come to you tonight with clarity that we make the right decisions and we move the city of Saginaw forward. It's a new season. It's a new day. Signs of anointing are coming to Saginaw's way. Father, I ask that you just watch over our workers, watch over our city manager, and watch over our citizens. As we deliberate tonight, Father, we ask that you strengthen every voice that speaks tonight to where we have a clear understanding, we are all on the same team. Father, I ask that you just open up hearts to hear what you have to say, so that we can direct our minds and our bodies and our souls into the mission of making Saginaw a place where we all want to live, work, and play. Father, I ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Now we will do the pledge. Thank you so much.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Good evening again. I'd like to welcome all of, everybody, the people watching at home and the people that are in the chambers. I'd like to welcome you to this night, to tonight's meeting. And I've just got a little housekeeping that I need to do. Council persons, please silence your phone. Please silence your phone. Audience, please silence yours as well, because if it goes off, I need a new iPhone. This is a public meeting. The audience is asked to remain quiet, refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. I remind you all, this is a public meeting and it is aired. The respect that's given out front to the citizens is the same respect I expect from this table. We are no longer going to be divided. As of now, it's a new season. It's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way. That means the city of Saginaw is going to do great things, and we need your help to do it. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I will proceed with the roll call. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Protim Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Copeland is absent. Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have eight members present and one absent.
Thank you so much. Can we have any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I have one. I'd like everyone to be aware that the Ways Convenience Station is open this Saturday, which is December 11th, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. The entrance is on Holland Avenue, and you must show proof that you are a city resident. And Mayor, that takes us to public input.
Okay. Welcome to all of those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly, so that we don't miss what you're saying. You will be called to the podium by the clerk. Each speaker has three-minute limit, in which what time the clerk will be actually our designated timekeeper. So when you hear her go beep, 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 please have all of your thoughts in, please. We will remain courteous and respectful to the members of the public, to those who are watching on SGTV, and to the council, so we can have, so we can give a serious consideration and on the concerns that you have that you want to address. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker this evening is Evelyn McGovern. I didn't see her earlier, so... Our next speaker is Hurley Coleman III.
Good evening to our mayor, city manager, city council members, all those in attendance tonight, and those listening online. I bring you greetings from Saginaw County Community Action Committee, who are our service executive director for the agency. Our agency has been changing, has been changing lives since 1965, and helping to create self-sufficient citizens in Saginaw County. Our agency is one of 30 in the state of Michigan, and one of 1,000 in America. We've experienced trying times, but with faith and collaboration, we've helped to impact the lives and citizens of the city of Saginaw. During the summer's water crisis, our agency partnered with United Way, First World Community Center, and the other city leaders to assist residents who were facing water shut-offs. Through the city's community developer block grant funding, we were able to assist 104 citizens from water shut-offs. This would not have been possible without the help of the mayor, city council members, city staff, and our CAC staff working together. I'm happy to announce another program coming to assist residents in the city of Saginaw and throughout Saginaw County. The Low Income Household Water Assistance Program will further assist people who may be behind on their water bills. The Water Assistance Program has been introduced through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and administered by the Community Action Agencies of Michigan. We will be able to help qualifying residents with up to $650 in water bill arrears within a 12-month billing cycle. This two-year grant program will not only impact qualifying city residents, but all qualifying residents of Saginaw County. We look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve our residents in the city of Saginaw by helping whenever needed. And then this program is set to begin very soon. So for more information, you can please call us at 753-7741, or visit our webpage, Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Jackson. Jessica Jackson? Let's go to Jeffrey Bowles. Give me one moment, Jeffrey. I'm fighting with my timer. Okay, I'm ready when you are.
Okay. Good evening to council, city staff, and everybody watching on TV. Just want to say publicly to the council, again, thank you all for your cooperation with the, with the city in this ARPA conversation. It's an important time in our city. I appreciate all your efforts. As you know, I come here pretty much every meeting to address something within the ARPA conversation, and please understand, I appreciate your understanding, knowing that we're just coming to, you know, give, give ideas or what have you, to, you know, to add to the process. As Mayor Moore always says, we're all on the same team, so I want to continue that, that relationship with you guys. So, in the interest of, you know, passing along any ideas or suggestions, one of the things I wanted to talk to you guys about today, you have a resolution on the table today about the ARPA committee. I was able to read it. I was also able to reach out to a few of you about it and tell you about the thoughts that I want to say publicly here today. It's, it's my opinion that I think you guys should give it a little longer look. Not that it's a bad document as it is, but I think that there are some things, some, some things that could be added to it. It's, it's a little bit broad, it's a little bit too broad at this point, and I feel like it could be a lot more defined. When you actually push this through, you know, on your end, you're basically creating a committee and you're giving it a body. You're giving it, you know, what it's supposed to be, and what their goals and objectives are. And I feel like you could add to that before you actually pass it. There's also another component that I'd like to throw in there, and that's a stipend. I feel like this isn't a normal committee. This committee is going to actually have some, some breadth to it, some, some duties that they're gonna, you know, actually go forward with and, and do some actual work. Like, they're gonna, you know, create some, some public, some more public meetings, they're gonna be doing a little bit more. And I feel like a stipend would actually incentivize the people that are on that committee to feel a little bit more responsible in showing up every time and doing what they need to do. So, that's, that's pretty much all I have, but again, I just want to thank you for your time and your, your understanding, and, you know, I know this is a, a process that's going to take a while, so I appreciate all your efforts. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Bowles, I have never heard you be that quiet. I can hardly hear you.
Our next speaker tonight is Curvin Merrill.
Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Moore, Mayor Protim, city council, city manager, everyone. Again, I'm Pastor Curvin Merrill. I just came by again to express my concern about the ARPA funds and some of the wonderful work that can be done with it, based on a vision that I've had for several years about us establishing a Saginaw African-American Cultural Center of a broader level. And sometimes that information can be misconstrued when we use the term Saginaw African Cultural Center. It will be a place where we could collaborate with all ethnicities, and they will have a home base to work out of, so I wanted to make that clear, because that's some of the information that people have been asking me about, is it just going to be for African-Americans? And the answer is no. And it's not just, just going to be a place where we have artifacts and different information about the numerous visionaries that have been born here in Saginaw and have labored here all of their life in Saginaw to make Saginaw a better place, that we have no place to recognize them. But it also will be a place where whatever a person, party, or organization have to offer our community, that there will be a lot of the space for that. I met with the superintendent of Saginaw Public Schools today. He was very adamant about the sooner you guys can give the Saginaw African Cultural Center some dollars, where we can let them know that we are serious about getting a building, and we're asking for the Longfellow Building on Holland and Brown Street, that the better chance we'll have of getting that building. We do need money allocated to us as soon as possible. We have submitted a grant where we have, did a thorough job to the best of our knowledge to try to cover all the bases. If it's anywhere that we are deficient in our grant, please let us know. I'm willing to work with anybody. Some of you know me, I'm a lifelong community activist that works in several capacities. Only thing is, you guys know, most of the time I pay everything out of my own pocket. I don't have money like that, especially for a project such as this. So again, I need your help. And y'all know I don't too much come and ask for help, I usually come giving help. But I'm saying from the bottom of my heart, this is a wonderful vision that I have and the community have, and I'm asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker tonight is Alex Mixter.
Well, good evening. It's always a pleasure to be here, and it's great to see everybody. So, I'm here because two weeks ago, I attended, I attended a board meeting for the county land bank, and it was at that meeting that there was a discussion around the fact that there was going to be a retirement, and one of those roles was going to be opening up. This is a seat that I've been working towards for the last couple of years of my career, essentially, in a very odd way that I can only really see through looking back. But it's important to know that this is actually a county board, so I'm not asking for approval from the body, but I am asking for your support for my appointment to this board. I have attended every meeting that the land bank has had, almost every meeting, since about 2017. And really, this is because I wanted to learn how these things worked, I wanted to establish more relationships, and I wanted to figure out why buildings come down. And that kind of attitude has actually been extremely fruitful, because the kinds of relationships we've been able to build have been extremely helpful in a very broad number of ways. But the main thing that I've learned is that there is kind of an attitude of us versus them. And I think, Mayor Moore, there's a theme tonight, because I think that's one of the things we really need to do, or ought to do away with, because this is a group of people, and the land bank is a vehicle. It's made up of the people who are operating the vehicle. And so I've really enjoyed learning how these things work and how all the levers work, but I've also had kind of an odd career since I moved back to Saginaw. I've had an odd career period, but there's a number of things that help in the kind of ways that I view the things that the land bank actually deals with. So I moved home to make a documentary about the good things that are happening in the city. And doing that means I had to listen to dozens and dozens of people in the process of interviews. And doing that is a wonderful thing, because you stop talking and you prompt the other person to speak, and you listen, and you listen for the next question. That type of attitude led me to realize that there was a house on Washington Avenue that a lot of people cared about. And when I got done with the film, I realized, well, boy, somebody ought to do something. And it's because of this body that that house is still standing, because you put the trust into me and the vision we had to actually make something happen. And we had an amazing holiday event over the weekend that was the most attendance we had ever seen. Through that, too, the HTC, I've been the chair for the last two years of the Historic District Commission, and one of the things we've been identifying for a goal is how to become more of a resource to the city of Saginaw and the people of the city of Saginaw. The other thing we're doing is working with the land bank directly to identify structures that matter to us, so we do not have to face the racing clock or to have a building collapse into the street as a surprise. One of the other things that I got involved with was actually La Shire Film Festival, and I helped on the rebuilding of the board on that, but I'd like to say thank you for...
I'd like to extend this time for 45 seconds.
Second. Second. It has been moved to second. Let's take a vote. All votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I appreciate that very much.
25 seconds, sir.
And it will be brief.
Wait for the timer.
I have to reset my timer.
Okay, yes.
So that's going to take 45 clicks. And Joseph Odena, 45.
He was almost done, y'all. We just wanted to...
There is one more bullet point.
Okay, I'm ready.
Yep. Okay, so I actually, I was involved in the rebuilding of the board, and in 2020, and in 2021, we had to figure out how to make the festival happen with limited resources. And we often hear in this kind of work that there aren't enough resources. And we actually found a way to reduce our costs by three-quarters of our annual budget. And we did that through establishing partnerships with local groups and all kinds of community organizations that wanted to help, and it's a matter of asking for that help. And so I ask for your support tonight, and I appreciate your time and the extension of the time as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker, final speaker tonight, is Alexander Verdone.
Thank you very much. My name is Alexander Verdone, and I'm here with my colleague Cecilia Hopkins, who is a new organizer with Ezekiel Project. It has been many months since we've updated council on our project, and I will tell you, after a year and a half of careful deliberation, we are pleased to present to you our project thus far, now titled the Ojiboy Island Community Project. Ojiboy Island, a jewel of a park situated in the center of the city, unifies and heralds our citizens. In the park is a monument dedicated to Honor Nuvell as the first white man in the Saginaw Valley. And yes, it is a history, but it's not the only history. We want to expand it, showcasing the rich diversity of experiences of our region's history and its people. Rather than erecting more monuments, which can never cover the scope of our diverse experience, we propose to memorialize our histories by building an educational marker and with it establish a public forum and digital archive. This is a project to share our families' histories in this region, how our families arrived, what our families experienced, the memories of Saginaw in decades past, and how we see those histories live on today. The project's digital presence, hosted by the Genealogical Collections at Hoyt Library, will allow people to hear the histories of our many residents and their families in their own voices. The genealogy department at Hoyt are actually very excited to host this history archive, which will be treasured for generations to come. Our highest priority is to make this project as educational, open, accessible, and cooperative as possible. We are currently organizing the first public forums and orientations, which will happen in January of 2022. These orientations will be hosted by the Michigan Oral Histories Association. Some organizations, such as the Zeebeeween Center of Anishinaabe Culture and Lifeways, have stated that they will be a resource for this project. However, they will only consider participating more intently if this project is declared by city council as being in line with Saginaw's values. And we not only believe this project is in line with Saginaw's values, we believe that this project will strengthen our communities in mutual understanding, learning, and interactivity. We've provided a packet, which includes a letter of intent, a project outline, a list of community, of committee members, various letters of support, and an invitation. It is our hope that you take the time to read about our project and consider it as a unique opportunity to celebrate our community's differences and discover our similarities. If you would like even more information than what is included in the packet, or if any questions, we would be happy to schedule a meeting to further discuss the details of what the project encompasses and how it will be executed. We want to meet with you, and we want your understanding, and we want your involvement, and we want your perspectives. So our contact information can be found at the top of your informational packet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, your next order of business is remarks of council.
Council members, you have three minutes as well to discuss what you want to discuss in three minutes. Tonight, we will begin with Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, of course, thank you to our public speakers, those who signed up, and those who are attendants tonight here in council chambers. I definitely appreciate what information and the topics that you are bringing forward, because it is something that we have discussed on several occasions, but that we care about, and we continue to want to hear from our constituents, because we're here for you. So thank you so very much. To Alex, I, I know, you know the sentiments of council and the appreciation we have, but I hope sincerely from myself, working with you on several projects, that you, no matter what is thrown at you, you don't give up, and you have been thrown some curveballs, but you've overcome a lot of obstacles, so I do wish you the best in your endeavor to become appointed to the land bank. And you have my support, of course. I do want to remind everyone to please check on your elderly relatives, neighbors, friends, because it is getting cold. We just want to make sure that they are set and safe. If it's fire prevention tips and tricks, please contact the fire department, they will definitely help you out. But it's more than just, hey, how you doing? You know, make sure that they're ready, that they've done their home checks for the winter. They have enough food. If they need help, they need transportation. And I know with COVID and the new Omicron variant, it's, we still have flu season as well, so just, and they could need prescriptions, whatever it is, just make sure we check on their elderly neighbors, friends, relatives, whoever it is, somebody that may be in need. And then lastly, I just want to commend the mayor for her words during her prayer, but also before we started council meeting, because the sentiment is shared personally, and I'm a woman at this table, and I have every right as everybody else. So I definitely appreciate it, and I will demand my respect at this table, no matter what the topic is, because I represent a lot of individuals, but I am also here because my constituents voted me here. So thank you to the mayor for your words. That is all that I have.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Councilman Ostash.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, tonight. I'm glad to see that the council chamber is so full. It's always good to see everybody come out, and for everybody watching at home. Mr. Coleman, thank you for coming out and what you're doing for the city. Water assistance is so important, and I personally know, I know people in the city that have been helped. It doesn't matter sometimes even what income levels we're at, so thank you for bringing a new program forward. Mr. Bowles, thanks for coming and sharing your thoughts today as well. We're always listening, and it's always good to have you here expressing that. Servell, good luck on this center. It sounds like it's something that would be really needed for Saginaw, where the youth could be and hang out. Mr. Mixter, I've known you since you've moved back into the city. We had a lot of conversations in my kitchen during your documentary. Got to the point, you didn't even know, where am I going to put all this together? And I kept saying, just put it down, and it was a wonderful job. Re-Saginaw was a great, a great film. You have done a lot, and my councilwoman Scherzer is correct, you never give up. And that's, that's what I admire, but you, and I'm proud of you for what you've done for the city. So I, too, from above my heart, I do support this. I hope that the land bank would consider that position for you, because I think that would be a great fit, just with the ideas that you have for networking. And Mr. Verdone, we've spoken the past, so I'm excited to see your, your packet that you brought in tonight. I'll be looking forward to going through that. I think it is a, a great project. I support it myself, and you mentioned diversity in the city of Saginaw. I think, and not think, that is one of the reasons when I moved here in 2004 that I stayed. I wanted to be part of a diverse culture, where I could come in and help and serve the city, and I've done that since I've moved in here on many commissions and boards. And you can also see the diversity in our city and this board that I sit with, that throughout the year, we've made that known through resolutions, proclamations, and tonight we have a ordinance introduction in the same sense. So thank you again for all the work that you put in for this project on Ojiboy Island. Just another thing I'd like to mention, there was something that came out since the last time I was here. Governor Whitmer has released some childcare, low-cost childcare programs for working families under $49,000 to be eligible. So if you're not familiar with that, and you could be interested in that, I would suggest that you contact the representatives here in the area. You can more than welcome giving me a phone call. My number is on my, my councilman page, 989-326-0001. I'll make sure I get you in contact with the right people. Mayor, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you so much, sir. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody here. Thank you so much to the public speakers. I don't have too much. The two things that I do want to talk about, one, December 2nd had marked the 11th anniversary of my friend who passed away to gun violence, Sean Stennett. I reached out to his mother, and it's a hard time for her and her family, but she wanted to pass along this message, that he was a wonderful son and friend, who would do anything for anyone, and that he loved anybody, no matter where they were, or who they had, or didn't have with them. And so if people aren't familiar with who he is, when you look at that mural on Hamilton, that's Sean looking back at you. So I want to honor him. He was a great person, he was a great friend to myself, he was a kind spirit, and I wish that we had more progress on gun violence in the city, but we don't yet, and we need to continue to make sure that we're highlighting those issues for everybody. Second, there is a fundraiser with the Civica that's going on right now. It's called Christmas for Angels. They have met their goal of, I think, $12,000, the last time I talked with Mr. Rodardi. If anybody is willing to contribute more money to young children, I will match that up to $300. So you can get ahold of Mr. Rodardi, say that Michael Flores sent you. If you want to break my bank, you're welcome to do so. And I'm going to be on Mahente on Wednesday to talk more about that, but we need to kind of continue to think about people that are not able to get Christmas gifts or are less fortunate than ourselves, and let's kind of match that, those funds, because there are plenty of people in the city of Saginaw that do not have a good Christmas coming unless we all step up and do so. So, other than that, thanks to the water department, it was a great tour. I went with Councilman Copeland, Councilmember Ostash, and Miss Monique Lamar Sylvia, my favorite, and it was a good tour. It was good, it was a good time, head by all. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Councilman Copeland. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Please pardon my tardiness, which leads me to my next comments. We are getting close to the holiday season. I am encouraging everyone, please take on your relatives, your family members. This is a serious time. Due to COVID, we've lost a lot of family members. This is going to be a hard time for some people emotionally, mentally. Please take on your family members, your friends, making sure that everyone is okay. Victoria's Believers will be hosting a grief share session coming up for those who, the holidays are a really tough time for people who have lost family members. So if you are interested in attending this grief share session, just to talk about those grieving strategies during the holidays, you can give them a call at 989-755-7692. That's all that I have for that one. I do want to say congratulations to, we've been hearing a lot about Swag Magazine. They hosted their first fundraiser, which was a fashion show this Saturday, and I'm just going to say, we got to look out for this next generation because I felt like I was in New York Paris at a fashion show. I could tell I was underdressed. They came and they did their thing, and I was so happy because it was just showing something nice for the city, something nice that young people are doing that we can get involved in. I saw the swagger, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Williams were there. But also, I want to say, as we prepare and continue on, I'm thankful for the conversations that we're having regarding ARPA. I'm really looking forward to where our city is moving. The conversations, it's taking time, but the more I sit and listen and communicate, I'm always finding out there's more going on in our city of Saginaw. And so I'm so excited about this. Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia Hill hosted a session last week. If you are a citizen watching this and you have ideas, please contact our city manager's office. We are looking forward to seeing your proposals. I always try and end my session, my comments with something good because I really believe in our city. I have faith in our city. I have not only faith in our city, but our citizens. There's a lot of things that are going on that we always know can be better, but it's progress. And I believe we're taking a step every day towards achieving that goal for a greater Saginaw. And I think the biggest thing is, as we make this progress, we're all becoming better because of it. I do want to publicly say, I'm thankful for our council members. I want you to know, I appreciate you, each and every one of you. I'm thankful to work with you all. I want our community to know, to continue to know, we are a team. I'm a team member. If you have anything, I'm going to be honest, there are certain things I cannot do, so I'm going to send it to the city manager. But whatever I can do to help serve our community, I'm believing, I'm going to say, I believe in God because we have a lot of great things coming ahead. So I trust you and I hope you trust me. Thank you.
Play with the clock, Councilman Copeland. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Good evening, everyone. I am so excited about our citizens coming in this evening. It just does my heart good to see you all coming here, and you're concerned about what's direction the city is going, and if I'm doing my job. So kudos to you. I appreciate the young people that came up and gave comment. Please forgive me for stepping out. I had to step out and get some information. I also like to say, when Councilman spoke about the question and answer, and it was so awesome. And I'd like to thank the mayor and all the city council that responded and came out. It was a very good session. And I'm in the process of doing proposal writing. We had our second one on yesterday. It was awesome. There was no room in the place, and it was so awesome. So if you, I am a grant writer, I do know what I'm doing, so let me say that. So if you all are in need of figuring out, trying to put your proposal together, how it should be, contact me. We will be having more. And I would love for some volunteers that do grant writing to come in and assist some of our people that want to write the proposals. And I think that's it I have. Thank you very much. You have a blessed rest of the day.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Would first like to say thank you to our speakers, and I would also like to point out, and I've told this young man, this Mr. Bowles, his consistency as a council member, I appreciate because it helps keep me on my toes. As a citizen of Saginaw, I love it because we have someone that's always stepping up, whether right or wrong, we agree, disagree. We have someone that has a voice, they're using their voice, and that's what we need for more citizens of Saginaw, is that type of consistency. That's how we get things done. That's how we move the mark. I would also like to take this time and say that this is a time of year where we definitely need to be safe and aware about our surroundings. I know that, we all know, things have changed to where we're not spending so much time shopping at the mall or stores, we're ordering online. So be safe even with your gifts. If you're ordering and you know you have some neighbors or some people in your neighborhood that like what you like, send that package to your local police department during business hours where you can stop and pick it up, if that's okay with Chief Ruth. But, but it's, it's better, especially if you don't have a ring alarm on your porch or anything like that, but you want to make sure your PS5 is safe. There's places, if it's not the police department, there are other secure places that you can send your packages for that safety assistance. Also like to mention, as Councilman Copeland mentioned, the fashion show on Friday night was phenomenal. It was phenomenal. I mean, to be in Saginaw and not feel like you're in Saginaw, it was spectacular. It was held at SVRC in the ballroom upstairs. The models were great, the designers, and all the designers were local designers, Saginaw designers. And it was, it was amazing. I mean, truly amazing. And it was ran by teens. That's the biggest thing. I mean, high school students put this event on, and it was an event you would expect to see maybe in Chicago or New York. It was, when they say there's nothing to do in Saginaw, you're lying. You're lying. And there, I mean, there's so many things, and I don't know if it's because of my age that I'm now figuring out that I don't have to leave all the time in order to find something to do. We have things going on right here in our community every week, every weekend, and there's no excuse for us not to take part and expose our children to it as well. And the last thing I want to say is, as far as being on this council, I want to encourage your children to get involved in sports and team-type activities, debate team, whatnot. So they have the understanding that when you get older, oh, thank you very much. No, no, I'm good. I'm good. I think they got it.
We are humble servants, you see. We are humble. Next, we have Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Definitely want to thank our public speakers for being here tonight. Mr. Coleman, thank you for being here and bringing that information forward about the LiWAP, I know the Li Heat, LiWAP, it's a mix-up, but thank you for bringing that information forward because as we saw at that event, that if folks don't know about the assistance available, it does nobody in the community any good. They need help, it is available to them. So thank you. Mr. Mixter, you know, you have my support, and I just want to commend you guys for the fantastic Fourth Annual Light Up the Lee event. The house that he referenced, the Lee Commons over on 633 South Washington, is a beautiful work in progress, but you would just never believe the transformation, like if you saw the before and after pictures, and it's incredible. And there were so many people in there. We had plenty of local vendors. We had Uppercut, okay, and Cakes the Great. We had Dawn of a New Day Coffee House, and I remember her first name, Noella, but I don't remember the name of her, beautiful handmade jewelry from a local artist. And it was just a fantastic event, and I can just see the kind of like anchor and hub that that place will be when it's finally complete and has tenants and things like that. So I just think that's wonderful. Mr. Verdone, it's good to see you, and thank you for all the work that you guys have put into this project for Ojibwe. I'm really intrigued, and I want to take more time to read it, of course, but I'm really intrigued by the, this idea of having the kiosks and the digital history. I think that's really cool, and I'm excited to see where that goes. But thank you for that. And I think other than that, I just want to stand in solidarity with, first and foremost, my mayor and her words of wisdom and encouragement before the meeting that Councilwoman Scherzer mentioned. But I also stand in solidarity with Councilwoman Scherzer, and as a woman and the longest-serving member of this council, I started out as the youngest and the only woman here, and as a woman who has finally arrived at a space, at a place where I have four female colleagues here all together, I too demand that respect, and I will demand it on behalf of my colleagues as well. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have.
Thank you very much.
You ready? I'm making sure, not your time. Councilman Ball.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out speaking this evening. Everybody needs to know that we're all in this Saginaw thing together, and we all want it to be a better place, and if it wasn't, you people wouldn't be here in this place today, expressing your views and how you can think Saginaw could be a better place to live, work, and worship. And I thank you all for that. I had the opportunity to attend the Swag Magazine fashion show too. I'd like to let everybody know that city councilmen should have been in the fashion show too. Brother had on a blue, beautiful blue suit, with some beautiful blue suede shoes on. So, I mean, everybody, sometimes, you know, you buy stuff, you don't have no place to wear it. So we got someplace to wear our good stuff that day, so it's good to see you there, Councilman. I had the opportunity to bring in my great-grandkids to the event. Two young ladies, one five and the other one was eight years old, and they had a marvelous time. My five-year-old wanted to get up and model. I mean, it was really good to see this thing happening in the city of Saginaw, encouraging other kids to want to do the same thing. Watching a 14-year-old editor of a magazine and his staff, his classmates, he had four of his classmates, and it was beautiful to see them all there. They was all of different backgrounds, and it was just beautiful to see in the city of Saginaw. I too felt like I was in another place, being there in that beautiful facility the SVRC Center has. I would encourage anybody to have any events to please use that place because it's a beautiful place for all events. So definitely do that. Another thing they had this weekend, I wasn't able to attend because of that, they had the fundraiser for the mayor's house. I did see some pictures, Madam Mayor was there. They had the county sheriff was the, what was he, Roy Rogers or something? Kenny Rogers. Oh, Kenny Rogers. In a way, I'm happy I didn't get to see it because I don't like Kenny Rogers that much, but anyway. I must admit, I'm not a country and western-type guy, but I must admit that as being the president of the Board of Directors of Wine and Gas Credit Union, we made sure we gave them a nice donation of $3,000 for the mayor's house. I do support them, I just don't support the country westerns. I must admit, y'all, that Saginaw is doing some great things for everybody. I mean, everybody. I did notice too that the chief said you could send those packages to the fire station too. There's always somebody there at the fire station too. But hey, I'd just like everybody to remember the reason for the season and that we must look out for these young kids who don't have fathers or parents at home. Thank you.
Before I start, I just want to say this. I said, "Councilman Ball," I stand corrected. It's Mayor Pro Tem Ball. I give credit where credit is due and acknowledge my constituents as being one. It's my turn. It's going to be fast. I missed you all two weeks ago, but I did miss you. Okay? I had the opportunity to be in a play with a school, and I was the main character. So I could not tell my young people no. I need you to understand, this is a tiresome job, okay? I'm a 24/7 girl. If you ask me, I'm there. They asked and I received. We had a ball. I got a standing ovation from kindergarteners, kindergarteners, preschoolers, all the way to eighth grade, and I was hollering just like, hey, I was in the White House. I want to say this to everybody. Jesus is the reason for the season. We need not get that twisted, okay? Saginaw is getting ready for a new birth. I need you guys, I need you to stand up, and I need my colleagues to have my back. It's not about who's the big dog up here. We all are. I share equal responsibility with all of them. I am gearing up for the Christmas celebration. I don't need your money, but I would love to have it. Anyone that knows, any family members from the ages of zero to 12, we will be at Charlie Platinum. We are gearing up right now to serve. Last year, we served 885 children, 356 families, and 91 flood victims. We, the community, this is not a Brenda thing. This was some business people asking me to help. If you notice, I'm always giving because a closed fist don't get nothing. So I have my palms going up to heaven. I want my blessings. You guys will not rob me of that. Saginaw is poised for a comeback. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at reports from the city manager.
Mr. Morales.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do want to first comment that I did provide a letter of recommendation for Alex Mixter for the land bank board, so he received that today and be happy to share that with council if you want a copy of that as well, or if any of you want to send along a similar letter for him. I'd echo what a lot of you said, he's done a, he's been very committed, and I think from the time he started working on some of these projects, he's learned a lot and really progressed and taken the time to learn things from some developers and move forward. And I understand now they're going to have heat and air conditioning in Lee Mansion, so that'll be a big help from the last time I was there. So congratulations to Alex. I think they've done a really good job with that, and everybody who's worked on it. I do also want to thank all of our boards and commissions, because there was a comment about pay and the impact that this potential ARPA committee can have. We have a lot of boards and commissions in the city, and we have people who have served on there for years and years and years, and they all do a lot of work. And several of our commissions impact ordinances. Some of you serve on the planning commission. You pass ordinances there, you develop ordinances, you're responsible for bringing the master plan to council. The ZBA impacts businesses in the city, as the DDA has been much more active in recent years. The Riverfront Commission members are responsible for the Art and About Project that they decided to take on. No funding, no funding for any of these committees and commissions. None of them are paid, and none of them get funding other than the DDA, and that's paid for by the businesses in the district. The Arts and Enrichment Commission serves and applies for broad grants from the state and provides them to artists throughout the community. And art events, and the Human Planning Commission for years has been doing a lot of what we're asking this committee to do, evaluating applications, making recommendations to council and funding. So I just want to recognize those groups, and there are several more, but I just jotted some down that I thought of earlier. And finally, we do have, council passed a motion at the last meeting regarding reviewing options for the possibility of premium pay for city employees excluding city council. So in the interest of transparency, I did want to bring that to you at this meeting. I did, you don't need to take notes because I did send you a copy of this prior to the meeting, but first I would say that city administration, and I checked with our HR director, we have not been approached by any of our unions for premium pay for, from the ARPA funds. Last year, there were other opportunities, and we were approached last year, but we have not at this point. Maybe we will be after this. Maybe we will be after this. At this point, we haven't been. Most of you, many of you received this information as we went through the year last year, but I knew council members might not be aware of some of these benefits, but I wanted to provide you information that we have provided our employees extra benefits throughout the pandemic, starting back last April. We created an emergency leave bank for employees, and we provided 40 hours to full-time city employees and the amount of normal weekly hours for part-time employees in addition to normal contractual PTO hours. The emergency leave bank was intended to be used for COVID-19-related incidents. However, employees could use the hours anytime during 2020, and emergency leave bank expired on December 31st of 20. Public safety employees, police officers, and firefighters were covered under workers' compensation for COVID-related illnesses. That was through the state of Michigan made that determination. So, police and firefighters that lost time related to COVID-19 did not use PTO, but they were covered under workers' comp. The city, several orders are coming out from the state and the federal government. So, the city also created an expanded emergency leave bank. And this allowed essential employees who had to work through the stay-at-home order to earn one hour of compensatory time for every hour that they worked, up to 80 hours between April 1st of 20 and April 13th of 20. And this created leave time beyond contractual obligations for city employees. The bank time had to be utilized by July 14th, 2021. And what that means, the essential in that is we did have a number of employees who did not work for portions of the state of Michigan stay-at-home order. We have other employees that were utilizing the expanded FMLA. So, a lot of the departments did have a skeleton crew throughout that period of time. So, they were what we, for purposes of this emergency, expanded emergency leave bank, they were the essential employees. Federal legislation required the city to provide up to 80 hours of additional paid leave time to non-public safety employees who missed work due to COVID-19, stay-at-home orders, or expanded FMLA. Last year, the state of Michigan offered grants for premium pay for public safety employees, police, and fire. Since those employees did have the ability to earn extra comp time through the expanded emergency leave bank, we offered them the opportunity to receive that premium pay from the state of Michigan if they wanted to give back their emergency leave bank. And it was a mixed group. I think some people did select the premium pay, and many people decided to keep the extra leave time. So, those are the benefits that we did provide since the start of COVID-19. If city council does want to proceed with premium pay, I think there are some other considerations. The interim final rule states that premium pay should be directed toward moderate-income workers. So, we would have to look at all of the employees' annual wages that we determined were essential and compare that with the state of Michigan average annual wage for all occupations, and it cannot exceed 150% of that. So, we would have to pick time periods and do that. So, if you're adding it up, most employees with our expanded emergency leave bank and also the emergency leave bank could have received 120 hours of additional leave time last year. Either if they were working, they could have earned that extra comp time, 80 hours plus the 40 from the emergency leave bank, or if they were not working, and even if they were, if they were non-public safety, they were eligible for that required additional leave time by federal legislation. That completes my update. Madam Mayor?
That was short and sweet. Do we have any questions for the city manager?
Monique did.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morales. What I'd like to know, when you're talking about premium pay for city staff, and it would have to, you'd have to go by low to moderate income of the persons that worked during COVID, is that correct?
Right. Yeah, we would have to file that calculation, so we'd have to run that annual report.
Okay. And is it possible that you can maybe email me that piece?
The report?
The piece where it speaks about that, yes.
We haven't run any hours or pay records.
No, no, no. I'm saying where it states that in the...
Oh, sure.
Okay.
It's right in the final rule, interim final rules.
Okay. Yeah, I've been reading so much till I'm like, my eyes are going like this. Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I had a few, yeah. The last report that we got was at 5:22 PM today about the motion that Councilman Copeland and I had had last meeting. Was there a reason for the delay, or was there a reason that we only had about an hour to reassess that information?
I guess I would ask, what is the urgency with it? And in the minutes, actually, the motion was made by Councilwoman Scherzer. Your motion did fail, councilman.
Benched.
Was benched, and Scherzer made the motion. So, in the motion, there was no mention of time, of wanting it back by a certain time. There was no mention of that in discussion. So, as I said, I think we all want to be transparent, so I thought it's best appropriate to speak at it at the meeting.
Correct. But is there a reason why that information was delayed until less than, or a little bit past an hour before at the meeting?
I don't think that's delayed, councilman.
Okay. Well, we were only given about an hour and 18 minutes to digest that information. That's not a sufficient amount of time for council to be able to, some of us are traveling to get here at that point in time and wouldn't look at our emails. I just want to make that aware.
Councilman, I would have reported that only verbally. I sent that by email, so you would have it for your records. I'm not clear on the urgency. As I said, there was no discussion of urgency at the last council meeting for this. So, I think I've addressed that issue.
So, is it your recommendation that we do not provide premium pay or that we wait until January of 2022 to provide premium pay?
Well, I think that's up to council, but I would, it's gonna take time to calculate that anyway, but in my opinion, yeah, it probably should be part of our contract discussions.
Yeah, I was just asking for your recommendation. Do we need the unions to be able to ratify their CBAs if we were to get premium pay?
I don't know if we have that requirement.
You said that no union had reached out to you about a premium pay. Do we need them to go back to the table to ratify any type of wage increase given to their current collective bargaining agreements with the city?
I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure what you're asking.
But you had mentioned that, that no unions had asked you for a premium pay.
Councilman Flores, we need to table that discussion, and I suggest, because I'm lost and I don't know about everybody else, if you can have that with the city manager, not to cut you off, no disrespect, but I think that that needs to be a conversation piece that you and the city manager have because I don't think you're gonna get anything solved. And we, nothing personal, anybody, we need to move forward. I stated it earlier, we're gonna respect one another. So, if you don't mind, Councilman Flores, setting up an appointment to talk to our city manager to get clarity on what he was talking about, I sure would appreciate it. I don't know how the other body feels up here, but when you're running a meeting in the public, you need to be mindful and respectful.
Correct.
Of everybody, especially your leader.
Correct. Is there a motion on the floor to table this, then?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and it just...
You wouldn't be tabling, tables in the same meeting. You want to postpone your discussion or whatever, but I think the mayor has made a recommendation. You should have a private conversation with the city manager. I don't think it's anything that you're gonna discuss or make a decision on the council yet.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's appropriate right now.
No, I think that the conversation should be between Mr. Flores and along with our city manager. I can't demand that it happens.
And I respect the recommendation of the mayor. I do, and I will take that recommendation. And I wish to speak with you in private about how we can get our essential workers premium pay at some point in time. And I would like to report to the public at a later date.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't know if Ms. Sylvia, she be doing it to me every time she come. Did you have anything?
I mean, like, at this point, yeah, I'll just be gone there. At this point, it's, now it appears, it could appear like they're talking about something that anybody else may want to hear. So, I'd like to, it mean if they're gonna have a discussion on it, I'd like to be privy to the discussion, so I don't know how to act.
I think for, contractual issues should not be discussed at the council table. Union contracts are...
So, we went over into contracts. Okay, yeah, I'd like to be part of that discussion or at least sit there because I probably wouldn't be able to input anything, but I'd like to listen. I'd like to be privy to hear the conversation.
And again, just to clarify my question...
Hold on. Point of order. We can all sing together. We're not gonna talk together.
Yeah, just to clarify...
Excuse me, sir. Ms. Sylvia, were you done?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. You may continue.
Thank you. Just to clarify my question, do we need unions to allow premium pay?
Well, the, I mean, allow is, I guess, a question, but just from my experience working with these unions, there are, if you did have premium pay, they would probably want various, variable approaches. The firefighters' union works different shifts, and they have a different philosophy than some of the other unions. The police officers' unions work 12-hour shifts, so, and a lot of our employees work regular eight-hour shifts. So, I think they would want to be involved in the discussion of how it's done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, city manager. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to accept the agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved in support. Is there any exceptions? Hearing no, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Is the resolution part of that? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other exceptions? There is no exception. Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Your next order of business is board's commission and committee reports.
Does anyone have anything that they need to report from a board or commission that they set on for the city? Madam Clerk.
Next, we have appointment of board and commission members.
We have three appointments, and we have one appointment and two reappointments. I need a motion to approve the appointments to the committees, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
For...
It's been moved in support.
Mayor Pro Tem supported?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Next, we have ordinance consideration and adoption. We have one ordinance tonight, and it's to amend Chapter 12 of Title I Administrative Code by adding Section 12.043 titled Saginaw Human Rights Commission.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and adopted. Any questions? Hearing none, let's call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
We're now at resolutions. We have one, and it is establishing the American Rescue Act Plan Act Advisory Committee.
A motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion.
Go ahead. I do have two motions to amend this, to amend this document. I've been in conversation with our city attorney just to make sure that the motion is correct. So, if this moves forward, I just do have a motion to amend the document afterwards.
Well, you would do it before the main motion is voted on.
Gotcha. So, may I ask that this motion be declined so I can make my motions and then we can move forward?
No.
Okay.
You have the main motion right now. You can make a motion to amend.
Okay. Then I make a motion to amend Section 2 of the resolution to add that a majority of members shall be city residents.
Could we make that three-quarters?
And the only reason...
Civic, because it's 10 to 15 members, it would be, you know, because, okay, or not constitute a majority. I like the idea, but that's my point.
And the only, and the reason why I made that motion is because I have a feeling this is going...
I'm sorry, do we have a second? I'll second that. Okay, thank you. Now, you can continue your discussions.
And I do want to share, I made that motion because I'm more than sure this is gonna be a 15-member committee, so that would just mean that eight of the, eight of the, yeah, eight of the seven will be city residents. And I said city residents because more than likely, business owners will be, and it would help us in determining when we do select our committee.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what will be amended. Actually, I think the whole resolution should be postponed to a later date. I think council should have been involved in, we should have, I think, we should have been involved in this. There's several pieces of this that I do not agree with, and I think the council should come to the table collectively and say how this committee should be, how it should be set up. I don't...
Mayor, your motion is to amend Section 2. That's what your discussion should be involved with.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We've got two motions on the floor.
We have one to amend.
One to amend in one motion, or just the amendment?
We're not gonna worry about the main motion yet.
Okay.
We're only focusing on the amendment.
We have, we have an amendment on the floor to amend the ARPA...
Section 2, Section 2 of the resolution...
Section 2 of the resolution.
To read, a majority of the members shall be city residents.
Thank you. What our city clerk said. What she said. She remembers. Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I would like to make a second motion to amend the last sentence of Section 5 of the resolution to read, "The ARPA Advisory Committee may be dissolved by city council once ARPA projects and all final reporting have been submitted," or, and I'll get this to you as well, "or earlier if it shall fail to serve its purpose, or it shall automatically dissolve once all ARPA funds have been spent no later than December 2026."
You want to make an amendment, let's do a amendment.
That was an amendment to change that portion to read that.
I second that.
Okay. There's a motion.
He second.
Second?
A second, second, all right.
We have a second.
Okay.
Flores.
Any discussion?
Yes. Can you restate that?
Okay, um, I'm going to restate it and then explain why I said it that way. Uh, "The ARPA Advisory Committee may be dissolved by city council once ARPA projects and all final reporting have been submitted, or earlier if it shall fail to serve its purpose, or it shall automatically dissolve once all ARPA funds have been spent no later than December 2026." And what I mean by that is technically the verbiage that we have right now, it could dissolve once recommendations are made, but in reality, our dollars are going to be allocated at a certain time, which won't be at the end of the final reporting. And I think for this commission that we have, the work that they have done, I would like to see this committee after that point still be able to either present to us basically saying, "From the people we've given dollars to, this is a report of the change that it's made over the next four years. That's why I wanted to extend that time so it wouldn't just end once all funding," because right now it says all funding. So that means once our last dollar is given, they're done. But if we say once all final reporting are done, that means the fiduciary, everyone who has to submit that final report to city council, this commission will still be active so we can have a final hearing or a final conversation, um, or report from them.
So mayor, in clarity, if I just may state and, and just make sure I have it correctly, so section five on the resolution, the first sentence will stand?
Yes.
You're changing the last sentence only.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can we make any more motions?
You, you have your motion on the floor with a second, you're in discussion.
Okay.
And I need everybody to keep in mind that this is really an ad hoc committee.
Yes.
It is not a permanent committee that will go on beyond any, beyond. We are hoping that we get more funds, and we need to demonstrate that we going to do the right thing to get more funds. So I just need everybody to understand, this is an ad hoc committee. It is not a permanent fixture that's going to be around forever and ever, okay? I just thought I needed to say that, madam clerk. We've got a, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Let's to call for the vote. Any other questions, I'm sorry.
In regards to, uh.
The motion.
Councilman, no.
Let's go, call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam clerk.
You're back to your main motion to adopt the resolution as amended.
I still had, okay. How, how, it may not be out of order.
No. We need a motion to adopt it.
You have that.
And we have that, and we have our second.
Yes.
Now we're up for discussion. Okay, we're up for discussion, yes ma'am.
Okay, let me make sure I'm getting it right. Well, anyway, like I said, I'm against the whole thing, but number two, where it says the directors to be part of the, uh, committee, the directors slash managers, managers of established, recognized nonprofit corporations. I think that should be, uh, taken out. Uh, what, they would need, I think, to be part of, they live in the city and/or have a business in the city, because this opened up a door, in my opinion, for non-residents and non-business owners and for people that don't live in, don't have anything invested in the city except for their nonprofit. And if it's to stay, so I don't know the wording, and I'm just telling you what I feel. If it's going to be nonprofits, it should be any and all nonprofits. There's many nonprofits in the city of Saginaw. So I think that should, uh, be taken out. So you should either live in the city or you should have a business in the city.
I have a question, mayor.
Mayor.
We still in our discussion? When can I make a motion to postpone this?
That be in order?
No.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this.
I second that.
Now can we go for discussion? So discussion, y'all, right?
So with our, with us postponing this, we still, when, when we bring it back up, will everyone submit their amendments prior to this, our next meeting to discuss this?
No.
Or will we come back to this under miscellaneous business, still making amendments?
You come back under.
Madam attorney.
Finished business. You come back under unfinished business with your amendments that you've already approved to it?
Okay.
Now you're postponing it till the next meeting? Because you can only post, post, postpone until the next meeting unless you specify a different date and time.
No, I think the next meeting should be sufficient.
Thank you.
Can I get clarity, please?
Yes.
When you say bringing back the amendments that, um, have been stated, so does that mean when you bring it back, there's no more amendments?
No.
Okay, so you could add other?
We will put the amendments you already approved in here.
And to continue.
We'll revise it with the amendments and then you continue your action.
Sounds good to me. All right, thank you.
And this is a point of clarification that maybe I can act for the manager or the attorney, attorney. When it comes down this, to this commission or ad hoc, I want to have, for me, this is how I'm understanding it, where a lot of the information in here, our hope and vision for this committee would be for them to work on creating additional regulations and rules to present, to, to help, because this commission is, if I'm, I want to make sure I'm correct, so I'm not stating anything incorrect. This commission will serve for the community to, one, have additional conversations, be that voice for the community in getting additional, uh, additional information when we can, but also having a help or doing sessions to assist those who are, who have submitted proposals? Because my, I want to know, we talk about the, you know, these proposals are coming in, is that going to this commission or will that? I know we have it, we're going to hear it to put it in our direction, but once that is done, will this committee be the one doing additional work in those committees?
Well, so backing up a little bit, the reason why this, this resolution is on here is because council passed a, a motion at the last meeting to bring it back for this meeting. So we had to bring a motion, a resolution back for you all to consider. So I, I appreciate, um, Councilman Copeland didn't contact me and about his, uh, and the city attorney about his amendments. So I guess it depends on what council wants the commission to do. It's, it's at your direction. So whatever you all envision to have, have the committee do, that's what your amendments to the resolution should encompass. From my view, what, I think when the city attorney and I drafted this, it was primarily to provide input back to council from communities of interest. So it's an additional way to get public input back from various groups, whoever you would happen to appoint to the meeting. Having, uh, an ad hoc committee like this, creating regulations or rules for the grants is probably not something that I would recommend. Certainly, I think if we have presentations about, um, proposals that we've received, then I would certainly think you would want to invite members of this committee to see those as well and also provide you input on what they see from, from those. But I think presentation should be made to the council because you have to make the final decisions on the funding.
Thank you.
Hopefully that answers.
Yeah, that's all, okay, cool, cool, cool. Thank you.
I was, uh, I was hoping that maybe we can get this taken care of today because I thought that the advisory committee would be a committee of, of citizens that elected us to city council to be able to give us some type of directive on what they want to happen with that, with the ARPA funds. So I think it's an excellent opportunity for the community to come back and tell the city council what they want. And the city council be the ones to make the final decision. So I, I, I'm kind of, um, I don't know why we need to delay it when all we have to do is vote on it and let the citizens do what they do, let them take a look at everything that we get to take a look at and see the ones they wanted the community the best. So hopefully I'll, hope that, uh, we can get this done today so we can start getting busy. Everybody talking about why we not getting busy, but then we going to delay it again. So let's get this thing rolling so we can get this money back out in our community.
Yes. Yes.
The council has been in possession of this document for four weeks. The original copy was given to us in advance. We put it on the agenda last meeting. There's been two weeks since that meeting where we could have weighed in. I completely agree with what Michael Balls is saying, but I also support his motion to postpone this because the council should have had it together. We could have done this via email, not wasting folks' time and telling them, we unanimously directed him to do this, and then he did it, and we didn't give him input, and then we sit here and we drag the meeting out because we got all these, no offense, George, I, I like your motion, I, I do, I do. Okay? But I'm saying, we, there is a reason why we have an email, there's a reason why this stuff is given to us. So if we have to continue to do this and drag it out, I can support postponing, but honestly, there's no reason to postpone other than that foolishness.
I would, I would say, I did, I, I know she's waving, but, um, Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia did send questions as well. So, but the way that, in my view, you work through it as a way that, um, you made them, as, as Councilman Copeland made the motion to make the changes at this meeting, and then you're doing it in a public format, but if it's, if it's postponed, um, please just send any amendments to just me and the city attorney to make those changes and not, not as a group.
Yes. Ooh, okay. Lord, let me say this right. No, I'm not going to even say that. Uh, just like, uh, city manager said, I did, uh, communicate some changes and things that I didn't like or whatever, those didn't take place. So what do you do? If he didn't agree or whatever, they still should have been put in here or bought before council, the things that I thought should be changed. And if not, why wouldn't, I don't, I don't see why council collectively is not putting this committee together. I don't see that. But I, and I also will, uh, agree with the motion by Councilman, uh, Williams.
One of the things, one of the things I need all the council to understand is this. There are certain roles that we play as council persons, and our role is not to run this city. I don't even run the city. I hold the title. We have a mayor-driven city, and I need to clear that air for everybody.
Manager.
Manager, I'm sorry. We have a, we are a strong, we are not a strong city mayor. Mine's is just a title. I seem like I'm running the city, but I don't run the city. Our city manager does, and I think we collectively, if we ask to give directions, in all of my nine years of sitting in the, sitting in either seat, the city manager has always offered an open-door policy to send stuff in ahead of time. When the preparation is done prior to, because we asked them to, we can't expect for him to wait a day before to do it. So I, I'm, if tabling is what this committee wants to do, table. But at this point in the game, I need everybody to understand this. The citizens, you said, what's taking us so long? Now we want to move. Now we have the concerns about should they get paid, should they not get paid? How long is it going to be? That's not what you asked us. Your concern was, when are we going to move? And we're trying to move, but we can't move if we run a stalemate up here. So at this point in the game, we've got a motion on the floor, yes, yes, Ms. Amy.
I, I just wanted to point out, and, uh, Clerk Santos can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a motion to approve the resolution in its current form with Councilmember Copeland's two amendments.
Yes.
Built into that. We now have a motion to postpone that in that form.
Right.
So under unfinished business at that, at our next meeting, that is the resolution that has to come back before this body. I can't make adjustments to it based on email cons, comments from individual council members. I do understand that you asked questions. Information was provided, but if council wants changes to the resolution, this is the place for council to make those changes. It's not for individual members to try to make individual amendments to it outside of this body.
Yes, Bill.
Yeah, just, I guess it's just a point of clarification for, uh, Councilwoman Monique. I think this would be the place that if you didn't like that sentence, you should make a motion for that piece of the sentence to be struck. And then, I know we're under a postponement right now, but I think we should get through this motion, then if you're still like that, go for your, make a motion, see what your council thinks, and move from there.
I thought that's what I did, but anyway, I make a motion.
No, 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 can't right now.
We're having a motion.
Right, I just, I'm ready.
We got time.
Is that in order with the motion to put, to postpone on the floor?
Okay.
Okay.
That's why. That's what's on there. Okay.
You have to vote on this motion to postpone.
Was a second?
We have a motion on the floor. Did we get, did we get a second?
We got a second. Yeah, we got a second.
Okay. We got a second. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What's the motion is?
The motion is to postpone.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Then can I do that again?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor to postpone this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Scherzer?
No.
Councilmember Oystash?
Nope.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
No.
Mayor Protan Balls?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have five yes and four no, so your motion is approved to postpone.
Now what?
Now you move on to your next. We are now at miscellaneous.
Two weeks.
Yeah, two more days. We are now at miscellaneous business.
I have something, mayor.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if it would be appropriate, and if it is appropriate, I would make the motion, but, um, would we be able to have staff put together a resolution to send to the county land bank board in support of Alex Nixter, or should we do it as individual letters? It just seems easier if we do a resolution.
I don't know if that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I tried.
I'd like to make a recommendation that the city manager, we begin to start interviewing in the manner that the county commissioners did with the applicants that they have. I'm not closing the date. Let me say this again. I'm saying we have applications now and we need to proceed. That was one of the reasons why we were trying to get this committee together. So in January, I'd like to make a recommendation that we begin to move forward with our interviewing process from the council table in January. I need to know if I can do that.
Are you asking me?
Y'all looking at each other.
Yeah, so you would like to have some sessions scheduled where you can, uh, have presentations made by the people who have applied?
Yeah.
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Yes, I will, um, set up, I will work with the clerk and the city attorney to set up, um, sessions in January where, um, there, we do have a lot of proposals.
Yes.
So, um, we probably need to have some parameters for the meeting, but, um, for what we have received till, to today, we'll try to schedule those individuals by reaching out to them and, and setting. by reaching out to them and, and setting up a couple of days, um, in January.
Yes.
Can we, um, try to schedule some of these for us who have jobs, not all at eight AM?
Yeah, we can schedule them for the evening.
Yes, ma'am.
What I wanted to know is, how can we listen at, I mean, we can listen at the proposals, but what are we working with? What are we looking for? We have not established, that I know of, established, uh, certain pieces that need to go in with us listening, or are we just listening to the proposal? Shouldn't there be something in order to say, "We're looking for this," or "We're not looking for this particular thing," or not?
You know what? I, I want to go with the floormate that the county has. The county is doing a total of nine sessions. That allows everybody a chance to present, and what happens during that time is you get ten minutes to present, and you get ten minutes for question and answers. I think, and it will be open to the public, so citizens, you are more than welcome to come. It, I don't know, I might speak out of turn, but if we can get a bigger location so that we can get more in, then we will try to do that. If the city manager says we have some change, ching, to do it with. But the idea is to, let's begin the process. That's why this motion for that ad hoc committee, we wanted to move it forward so that we could get with the committee to inform them that we need you here so that you can help direct us in how we're doing what we're doing. So, no, we don't have a direction, but we do need to start listening. And once again, the time is now. If we keep putting off, we will never get this thing done.
So, which?
And, and that, yeah, and when we had Congressman Kildee's representative at your event, he clearly stated it's going to be like a CBDG block grant event. So we are the commission, and they are presenting their proposals, dollar amounts, and then we would review all of that. And then, just like with CBDG, the manager compiles all that into a spreadsheet, and we would most likely see that at the end.
Allowing the committee, let me interject.
Yeah.
Allowing, let me interject, allowing the committee to, to be engaged in that process.
So we're just, can I?
Hold on. And I, you saying we, our directive, we do have a directive, and our directive is the, uh, the goals that we, uh, picked out during the session that we had at the, uh, Temple Theater, and those are the five categories, the neighborhood, revitalization, healthcare, access, recreation, jobs, economic development, and public safety. So this, this should be our directive when we go in, that the people that come to us, they need to be in these five categories. We already established this, uh, two or three months ago, am I right?
I think it's a little more detailed than that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, she, I think she's, it's a little bit more detailed than what we came up with, as far as directives, the markers that we're looking for, i-if I'm wrong.
You are definitely right.
We have not gotten to that point, but if we hear what you have to say, we are going to get to that point. But right now, we haven't done anything. We done this back in September, and we still trying to figure out what to do. It's time to move forward, not backwards, y'all, forward. Yes.
We're just, at, at this point, what you're saying, just listen to the proposals.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mister Manager, make it happen. Will you make it happen?
Yep, we can schedule that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? No. No, no. Anyone else? Y'all having sidebar conversations again? Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Do you have a closed session to consider?
I need a motion to go into closed session.
I'm moved.
Can we get a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm right.
You're right.
Can we get a roll call?
Coming right up. Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have five yes and zero nays. Motion is approved for a closed session regarding the Latarte case.
I need a motion to go back into open sess- open session.
Second.
It's being moved in support, all those.
So moved and support.
All the, wait, did you get it, Ms. Jan?
Yeah, I didn't hear who made the motion.
Who made the motion?
I heard the motion.
Who seconded?
Me, me and Amy.
You and Mayor Monique.
Thank you.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
I move to approve recom- I move to approve the recommendation of legal counsel as discussed in the closed session regarding litigation regarding the Latarte case.
It's being moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Who made the motion?
I'll second.
I made it.
Any ma- hold on, everybody sit back down for a minute. Who seconded?
George.
All those in favor? All those opposed, good night.